Good evening. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been newly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. If you'll please rise and join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. If you'll remain standing, Pastor Greg Coy from Premier Baptist Church will offer our opening prayer for us this evening.
Let us bow in prayer. To Heavenly Father, we thank you for your love, your kindness, and your grace and your mercy. We thank you that you sent your son Jesus to die on the cross for our sins. Father, I ask tonight for heavenly wisdom, wisdom for everyone in this room to bring honor and glory to the school district, but also to your holy name. I pray that the power of the Holy Spirit, Lord Father, will speak wisdom to each heart, Lord Father, and bless all of our children that go to school, Father, that you would send your holy angels to protect them. Father, I ask you bless Bastrop Independent School District. May you surround it with your glory and your honor. And Father, the bus drivers, every part of it, school, every part of it. But Father, in the name of Jesus, bless tonight's meeting. We ask this prayer in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, and all of God's people. Say amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our student speaker on Character Education Trade for October for Responsibility. Bruseta Maron Deluna is a 10th grade student at Colorado River Collegiate Academy. She enjoys art, in writing, and is an active member of Circus Drama Club, Speak Up, Speak Out, Sun Composting, Yearbook Club, Student Council, and the Dungeons and Dragons Club. She also volunteers at the Bastrop Public Library on her spare time. I wonder if I want...
Is there spare time?
I... Bruseta, you want to come up and give us your speech, please?
Responsibility is something that we see and should enact every day. To be responsible is to take action in order towards what you're involved in. This means that whenever you're being tasked with something, whether it be completing a certain role in a group project or a housework, it's your duty to do and complete the task and do it well, meaning that you do not procrastinate or do a poor job. Except responsibility doesn't just go towards tasks that people assign you, but also extends to what you assign yourself. This includes your own assignments such as personal projects or doing any volunteering. Self-regulation comes from this that will help you to complete what you set out to do. In the case where you wind up not accomplishing what you set out to do, then it comes down to you to take responsibility of admitting that to either whomever you were working with or to yourself. This is a big thing of a responsibility, having accountability. Even though all that is good, it's best to not be responsible just out of obligation, but because you yourself want to be responsible. With all of that, with all of that, the actual most important thing is having self-responsibility. And as you do everything that you have to do, not for praise or out of obligation, but because you yourself have desired to do so. Aside from external self-responsibility, internal responsibility is equally important also. But once again, accountability coming to play. When you are able to fully acknowledge your actions, you have reached self-responsibility. Being self-responsible gives you the ability to control over yourself and your actions, having the ability to not blame others for your own actions, but instead only up to them. This helps you to make better decisions, ones that you will be proud of. Not only that, but self-responsibility allows you for developing great relationships and being a better person in general. With all of that, responsibility comes accountability we take upon ourselves. In general, being responsible is an important thing for us to do. It helps control the way we act and improve our outer relationships by impacting how we interact and present ourselves to the world.
Awesome. Good job. Bruseta, before you run off, will you introduce who you're here with today? I believe your principal's here as well. Is that... That's right. Thank you, Mom, for sharing her with us this evening.
Bruseta, Bruseta, we also have a gift for you to thank you so much for all the preparation that you put into your speech tonight. You did a great job.
Next is our recognitions and special presentations. For the College Board National Recognition Awardees, our presenter is Cheryl Pinkston, the Advanced Academics and LOTE Coordinator. Good evening, Cheryl.
Hey, how is everyone? I'm very excited to be here tonight, and I wanted to take this opportunity to highlight the achievements of some exceptional students from Bastrop ISD. This evening, I'm honored to recognize 65 juniors and seniors who have been named College Board National Recognition Program recipients. I will tell you, it's Tuesday night, and a lot of things happen in Tuesday night in high school, so there's volleyball games going on. There's a band competition at Cedar Creek High School that they're attending. So I want to make sure that you see each and every one of these names on this screen, even if they aren't here in attendance. To earn this recognition, each student had to complete a competitive application, and at that time when they submitted it, had to have a 3.3 GPA or higher. So the students could qualify in one of three areas, or two, or three. One of those was if they were the top 10% of test takers for the PSAT at their campus. The second is being the top 10% of PSAT test takers in the state, while being among a first-generation college student, or being from a rural, small town, which Bastrop is, or earning a score of three or higher on two or more AP exams. I'm incredibly proud of these students for their hard work, their focus, and their perseverance. I also want to thank their families behind us for fostering a strong commitment to learning and to growing, and I look forward to seeing all that they achieve in the years to come. Going to call the names of the students who are here from each high school and have them step forward with their certificates. So from Bastrop High School, Mia Kavanaugh. Luca D'Amico. Noah Hewitt. Jada Hodge. And you can turn and face the audience so they can see you. Ava Pace. Nat Pham. Keith Forman... Keith. Come on, Keith. Pronounce it for me. Pomprassong. I got it. I even practiced it. Lauren Rosales. Cooper Voit. Bryce Wakehouse-Fore. From Cedar Creek High School, Hayden Belcher. And from Circa, Juan Jose Castellanos Peña. Can you grab it here? Okay, so we thank you so much for your hard work. If you'll step out, Chris is going to grab your picture at the staircase, and we congratulate you all.
Congratulations. Cheryl, don't run away.
Nope.
You also get to recognize our National Math Star finalist, along with Keith Hartle, the National Math Star.
There you go. Keith, come on up. We are so very excited to introduce you to something called National Math Stars. And we had two students, Christopher Martinez in 3rd grade at Blue Bonnet was a finalist, and Tyler Culpepper is a finalist, but has also moved on. And Mr. Keith from the company will be telling you more about his award today.
Thank you, Cheryl. Hi, everyone. Really grateful to be here and share a little bit more about Christopher and Tyler and their participation in National Math Stars. I promise I'll keep it quick. For myself, I'm a former educator in the Austin area. I was at Charter School up there. I taught and was a principal for a few years up there, but I'm excited to do what I do now. At National Math Stars, we're a nonprofit organization, and what we do is we scour the country looking for the brightest mathematical minds in 2nd and 3rd grade and really work to identify those students and then make sure that they have all of the science and math instruction, all the science and math enrichment that they would ever need to continue that already brilliant mathematical mind that we've identified, to make sure that they're getting all the supports they need all the way through 12th grade. So in the state of Texas alone, we had over 8,000 nominations, all from extremely gifted students and families. Six, I want to say 4,000 applications. Ultimately, only 200 students in the entire state of Texas were selected as National Math Stars from this incredibly talented group. And Christopher and Tyler were named one of those 200 finalists. So incredible achievement just to be named that. If you were to Google National Math Stars, you'd see it's a bunch of different districts that have really celebrated those finalists. It's a huge deal to be named a finalist for this program. So I know Christopher is not here in the building today, but Tyler is in here, I believe. Yeah.
There he is.
Tyler, come here, buddy.
Come on up here.
So Tyler not only made it as a finalist, Tyler's family's here. You went through the interview process and whatnot. Tyler's family, Tyler himself had to take a couple of exams, admissions exams, to get into the program, had to score incredibly high on top of other incredibly high scores to separate himself. The family had to do a quick little interview. Tyler did an interview himself. Ultimately, he's named one of our Pathfinder Stars and was accepted into this really prestigious program. So we're so excited to have Tyler into the program for the next 10 years, all the way through... From, I believe, you guys have already gotten notified, or like already started, gotten the notification email of like, hey, you're in the program? Yeah. From now until 12th grade, he's going to, Tyler and family, going to be getting really everything that that STEM bucket could fill to make sure that Tyler's going on to change the world and be on the frontiers of math and science when he leaves 12th grade. But this is things like math mentoring, family advising, pointing out STEM summer camps to go to, access to advanced coursework for Tyler, a supportive community, really just, like I said, that STEM ecosystem for Tyler and making sure he just continues his already incredible achievements. So Tyler, congratulations again. And family, thank you for completing the steps. And Cheryl, I'm so sorry. I got excited and I didn't even do the slide, so... That's what I said, guys. Yeah. Good job, Tyler.
Again, thank you so much for Advanced Academics being here and able to do this. So... Yeah, so we're going to head out and get a picture out front. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Next, Scott Bunch, our Chief of Police, is going to come up for a recognition of Sergeant Freddie Nunez.
Well, I don't want to say Freddie's a math star. We're not going to go that far. So we'll leave that there. We'll just leave that. But what I would like to do is take just a few moments to recognize Sergeant Nunez. So in law enforcement, when you make rank, you make supervision the first time, you've got to go through a 40-hour class on this supervision part. Basically, what it does is it kind of throws you in the deep water and says, good luck. Supervise law enforcement, because we're type of ego personalities on a stick. And so we're very hard to deal with sometimes. And so, but what Freddie saw was that I need to do better. I need to do more. And so it's not about your supervision, it's about your leadership. And so the Texas Police Chiefs Association, which has their main office right down the road here on 95, developed a program called LEACOP. It's Law Enforcement Command Officer Program. And it's what they designed for what they notice as up-and-comers in your agency, if you will. And so, because what happens is after two years in law enforcement, you can apply to what's called LCC, Leadership Command College. And it's a very much more detailed, oriented, driven process through the leadership course that a lot of law enforcement professionals go to. And so, but before you do that, basically you just have to be a supervisor for a couple of years, and you have to kind of figure it out on your own, if you will. Well, through this LEACOP program, they help you get past that. And so they help you see where not only supervision, but where leadership can take you, where it can take your organization, where it can take the profession as a whole. And so it's not a class that you go in and you sit in and I'm going to watch and listen. I'm going to have to participate. I'm going to have to write papers. I'm going to have to put this, what I'm learning, into practice. And you learn also that typically in law enforcement, we're servant leadership. It's what we do, but we also have to have the switch that we flip, because authoritarian has to come out periodically, or whatever the leadership style is that has to come out. So it teaches you all the different leadership styles. There are a lot that start the program that don't finish it, because it's not a one and done. It is a 10-week process. The first three weeks is really understanding what leadership principles are all about. And then the rest of the time, you pick a pathway, and then you go and you learn how to put those things into practice. Because it's a daunting program for a lot of new up-and-comers, they don't finish. Well, Freddie is one that finished. He put in the time, he put in the effort, and he finished. I had no doubt he would. And he became the 153rd graduate of the program in the entire state of Texas. And so not only does he come here and do his 12 to 14 hours a day, and with his family and his children and everything else, Freddie continues his growth professionally, but he continues his growth academically. Freddie's also finishing college. And so it is my privilege to have somebody like Sergeant Nunez step up and want to take on a supervisor role, but also want to take on a leadership role. And I also want to thank him for taking on this role in this LEACOP. And in December, he's eligible to put in for LCC, which he'll do. He'll write a paper, and I'm sure he'll be accepted to LCC. But he'll continue this leadership path. And for a guy like me that's old and been doing this a long time, you want these people that are coming in behind you, that has taken this profession to a different level and taking accountability for themselves and teaching the people that behind them what leadership looks like. And so Sergeant Nunez.
Thank you, Sergeant.
This is from the Texas Police Chiefs Association, again, which is right down the road.
Thank you for the board for your support. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Freddie. Next on our agenda is a recognition of our Bastrop ISD principals, and the presenter is the Bastrop ISD Board of Trustees and Interim Superintendent, Dr. Kristy Lee. Dr. Lee?
Thank you very much. So October is National Principals Month, and tonight is a very special board meeting, because we have the privilege of recognizing and honoring the 17 women and men who lead our schools. I truly believe that being a principal is one of the hardest jobs that there is, and so I'm so happy to recognize them tonight. These leaders are true masters of the balancing act. They're pulled in many directions every single day. They have to juggle instructional leadership, school safety, operations, staffing, community relations, keeping hundreds of students, and in some cases, thousands of students, safe each and every day. They are expected to create positive school culture, be good people managers, support teachers, build trust, handle conflicts that arise. I'm sure there rarely are ever any conflicts, but if there are, they can handle it. Our principals deal with the public and political pressures that come with high-stakes testing and the perceptions about success, debates over curriculum, book challenges, social issues, and they know firsthand how every action or incident can be publicized and criticized instantly on social media. Each year, they may have to adjust to staffing shortages or challenges, budget pressures, a high stress, very little downtime, and the ever-changing expectations and mandates that accompany public education. Leadership can be a lonely endeavor, and the principalship especially can be isolating. That is a real thing. So that's why it's so important that we just take a moment to recognize them and to thank them for what they do for their students, for their schools, and for Bastrop ISD. So for now, I'm going to ask our Chief Academic Officer, Jennifer Everly, to introduce each group of principals. And we're going to start with our high school principals, and if you would, please join us up front.
Both secondary.
Both secondary, yes. Okay. There we go. Oh, wait. Okay. Okay, Mr. Cronardi has been a fixture in BISD for many years. He leads both the Colorado River Collegiate Academy and Genesis High School, two distinct schools that each have been greatly impacted by his practical guidance, innovative ideas, his inspiration, and his focus on high expectations for all. Ms. Stagman has been a tremendous heart, has a tremendous heart for students and works hard to support her teachers and staff so that they can continue to push for academic excellence. Her leadership had them see a 17-point gain in this year's accountability rating, and you'll get to hear more from CCHS during our Mission Moment segment tonight. This is Ms. Gabriel's sixth year at Bastrop High School, and she has transformed the campus into one of pride, high expectations, and family atmosphere. Her staff loves and appreciates her for all she does to support them, and it shows. Under her leadership, BHS is excelling in academics, athletics, and in so many other ways. So let's give a round of applause to our high school principals. Oh, yeah. Okay, now if I could ask middle school to go ahead and come up front. All of you guys. Yay, middle school. Thank you to our cheerleader back there. Yes, find a spot in between. Okay. As Karen's getting those, let me go ahead and get started. Okay, Ms. Nicholas is the inaugural principal at Riverside Middle School, and she's doing an amazing job of leading that school in its first year as a middle school. She's building culture and school spirit and creating strong instructional practices for her staff. Ms. Christie is also the inaugural principal of Creekside Middle School. She took over more than two years ago when it was Cedar Creek Intermediate and is doing a great job of building the skills for her teachers and staff to be a data-driven campus culture and supporting them and pushing the boundaries for all students to succeed. And Ms. Cooper is a very experienced, is a very experienced leader of Cedar Creek Middle School. Her enthusiasm, high expectations, and relationships with staff and students, all the hallmarks of her leadership style. She is 100% invested in their success, and it shows in all she does. And Ms. Pearson is the fearless leader of Bastrop Middle School. Through her sheer grit and determination, she has led her staff to transform the culture of BMS. Students understand the high expectations she's set for them, and they 100% know that she wants the best for them each and every day. She is their number-one cheerleader. So if you guys would, let's give a hand to our middle school principals. Thank you, guys. Okay, elementary, we got to split you up. Okay, so if I could have the Creekside Elementary Schools come on up. You get to rock, paper, scissors. You can come now, you can come in a minute. Find a spot in between? Okay. So Ms. Felker has led Red Rock Elementary for the last three years. She has a tremendous instructional knowledge and is working hard to turn the campus around. Katie is known for having a great attitude, a spirit of teamwork, and a willingness to try new things to help RRE succeed. Dr. Hernandez is in her third year at Cedar Creek Elementary. She has instituted some exciting new initiatives at the school, such as blended learning and the house model, both of which have generated student excitement and teacher engagement. Okay, Dr. Lozano has served at Camino Real's first and only principal since it opened its doors in 2023. She has strong relationships with her teachers and has built a family atmosphere where teachers and staff support one another to do what's in the best interest of their students. Ms. Faircloth is the principal of Blue Bonnet Elementary School. She is a creative force, as well as a strong instructional leader, who holds the highest of expectations for her staff and students. You might see her being elf on the shelf or producing her own TikTok videos to engage students and families. So if you would, let's give a round of applause to this group of elementary principals. Okay, thank you, guys. Last but not least, Bastrop Side Principal, elementary principals. We got this down now? Okay. Okay, let's start with Ms. Ringstaff. Ms. Ringstaff has been in BISD since 2015, and this is her fifth year leading Lost Pines Elementary. She is loved and valued by her staff and has one of the highest teacher retention rates in the district. She builds relationships with parents and students alike. Mr. Hans is new to Mina Elementary and BISD this year, and he has breathed new life into that campus. His visibility and approachability are things that the staff appreciate about him, and we look forward to the difference he will make this year in Mina and beyond. Ms. Piles is... Let's try it again. Ms. Piles. Ms. Piles is also in her first year of leading Emile Elementary, and she has been a welcome addition to their staff. She is very supportive of the students and staff, organized and highly visible on the campus. We're confident that Emile will see great gains this year under her leadership. Ms. Kaismore is famous for saying, "COE is the place to be. COE is the place for me." And she embodies that message for sure. Since the school opened in 2023, her enthusiasm, supportive nature, and continued constant willingness to go above and beyond are hallmarks of her leadership and character. And last but not least, Ms. Guerrero's in her first year as campus principal in BISD as the leader of our new Adelton Elementary. The culture she has already created with her armadillo staff, students, and families will surely set them up for... are sure, will surely set them up for success. She has a tremendous heart for students and for education. So if you would, let's give another round of applause to these staff. Okay, and last but not least, Mr. Allison was unable to be here tonight with us, but we want to say thank you to him. Mr. Allison has been the driving force behind substantial change and improvement at Gateway DAP. His quiet but confident leadership resonates with both students and staff, and we couldn't be more thankful to have him here with us at Bastrop ISD. So if you would, one more time, let's give our principals one last round of applause.
Can I just say one thing? It's not on the script, you guys. So I want to say one thing because it wasn't said, it wasn't mentioned. You guys are the leaders of the largest employer in Bastrop, and at times in a small community, it can feel like you're living in a fishbowl. Your reputation is amazing. I love all of you. I think you are stellar at what you do, and I know that it isn't always easy, but I tell you from my heart, I'm still scared of principals, and you guys just make me so happy to be part of this board. So thank you for everything you do.
Next on our agenda, there's open forum, but no one signed up to speak this evening. At this time, we'll move on to our mission moment. Dr. Lee?
Yes, I am proud to introduce a segment we began actually at last month's board meeting called Mission Moment, and this feature is intended to just highlight one of our school programs or initiatives and showcase how it connects to our mission as a district and as educators. And so tonight, we have Ms. Casey Stagman, the principal of Cedar Creek High School.
Let me make sure I get this right for the slide. There we go. All right. Good evening, Dr. Lee and members of the board. I'm honored to present tonight's mission moment and share how our students at Cedar Creek High School are connecting classroom learning to real-world career pathways through work-based learning and industry-based certifications. So a little bit about that. At Cedar Creek High School, we have a goal of connecting what happens in our CTE classrooms to future careers and workforce opportunities for our students. Over the last three years, Cedar Creek High School has continued to increase its college, career, and military readiness scores, and much of this growth comes from our students earning industry-based certifications aligned with their career and technical education programs of study. So specifically for the class of 2025, 93% of our graduates met CCMR standards, and over 20% of that score was attributed to students earning certifications that prepare them for the workforce. We were also recognized by the Texas Education Agency with a distinction in post-secondary readiness, which celebrates our success in connecting students to meaningful pathways beyond graduation. So students who take an IBC or industry-based certification exam excel through a four-year program of study that aligns with the courses for the exam. During a student's senior year, students prepare for the exam while receiving firsthand experience in that career field. The primary goal of work-based learning is to develop academic skills and employability skills, both of which are crucial for success. Industry partnerships give real-world exposure and strengthen the school-to-work pipeline for our local employers. At Cedar Creek High School, we're proud to offer or have eight established partnerships with local employers, and we offer 10 different industry-based certifications each year, and these are in the fields of medicine, manufacturing, hospitality, construction, and more. These certifications help our students enter the workforce with higher earning potential, especially when aligned with both our coursework and local labor market needs. So I specifically want to highlight three partnerships that we have. First is with the Hyatt Regency Lost Pines. This is one of our longest-standing partnerships, and currently, we have 22 students who travel to the Hyatt four days a week. They complete rotations of work through the restaurants, the spa, and the kitchen, and at the end of the school year, they'll take the hospitality management lodging IBC exam that will allow them to enter a career in the hospitality field. Super proud of our Bluebonnet Elementary partnership, one of our most meaningful partnerships. We have eight students who participate in an educational practicum at Bluebonnet Elementary for two hours each day. They support classroom teachers and students. At the end of the year, the students will apply for the Educational Aid I certificate, and this certification qualifies them for immediate employment with our school district, which we hope for, as a teaching assistant in classrooms. Principal Laura Faircloth at Bluebonnet Elementary beautifully shared that the opportunity to host our interns has a threefold impact. Our teachers gain a fresh and exciting vantage point as they teach through the ideas and insights of interns. Our students benefit from seeing big kids who are respectful, hardworking, and intelligent, powerful models of what they can aspire to be in just a few short years. And as a campus, we find hope in the future of education itself. Time and again, we are impressed by the natural talent and genuine passion these student interns bring to our school. Thank you, Ms. Faircloth, for those very, very kind words. And our last partnership that I want to highlight is with our Bastrop ISD Operations Department. This is a newly-formed partnership this school year. Currently, we have 26 students in our practicum construction class that are enrolled, and eight of these 26 students applied, interviewed, and were selected for internships with the Bastrop ISD Operations Department. These students are tasked with completing Cedar Creek High School work orders. So a work order is entered when the maintenance and operations department needs to respond to fixing or addressing a problem on campus. So this can range from a construction problem, like painting or fixing sheet rock, or even hanging items like bulletin boards or whiteboards, but it could also be more extensive, like plumbing or AC-related issues. In the short time of this program's initiation, which has literally been one week since they've started on work orders, but in one week, they've completed 13 work orders in approximately six hours of work time. As they continue their hands-on experience, they also prepare for the NCC ER exam, which is a key certification exam for all construction areas. I also just want to take a minute to highlight our partnerships for advanced manufacturing, which specifically is with Acutronics, TCS Mechanical, and Dove Tail. These partnerships support our PTEC Advanced Manufacturing Program. The program is one of three academies in Bastrop ISD, and this gives students a direct link to a high-demand, high-skill career after high school. I do want to extend a thank you to some people within our Bastrop ISD department, specifically in the CTE department. Raina Ellis, Director of College Career Military Readiness. Chad Gertz, our CTE Coordinator. Nathan Mauser, PTEC Coordinator. Stephen Owls, CTE Specialist. And Michelle Sherman, PTEC Specialist. It really is because of the partnership with them. They are dedicated to building relationships with our local employers and aligning opportunities for student interest and the market to ensure that students are ready for college career and life in general. These individuals, they come with the plans, they come with the proposals, and they make it really easy for me to just say yes because it's a future opportunity for our students. And so I really do appreciate their partnership and what they pour into Bastrop ISD. In closing, these opportunities help our students see beyond high school, feel supported in their next steps, and understanding that college is not the only pathway to success. There are many valuable routes to meaningful careers. Thank you. Are there any questions that you guys have?
Principal Stagman, I'm just very impressed that this, these pathways for these kids is so meaningful, and it seems to be AI-proof. You know, we're hearing the media nowadays that AI is going to take all of our jobs and things like that, but these are things that we're going to need forever. And it really is meaningful to have these programs so that we can get these kids onto the next step in life.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Yes.
I just wanted to share, when I was in the classroom, I had a student that came in, and she, she only came two days a week, but she came in, and she is a teacher now currently, so super exciting to see that program.
Yes, absolutely. All right. Thank you, guys, so much. I appreciate it.
Next on our agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Christie Lee, our interim superintendent.
Thank you very much. So since my community report from last month's meeting, we've, a lot has happened since then. We dedicated our newest school, Adleton Elementary, in a wonderful celebration, complete with our design and construction partners, staff, and students, and even some entertainment by the Armadillo Girls, singing their special song. Both of our comprehensive high schools had awesome homecoming celebration weeks. We also held an amazing state-of-the-school district big event right here at the Performing Arts Center, thanks to a lot of people in this room right here. We talked, we shared with the community and the chamber businesses where we stand academically and what our goals are for this year. We talked about a lot of what Ms. Stagman shared tonight, as well as what we're doing to prepare teachers and to provide pathways for them if they're not quite, if they're not, you know, degreed, not certified, how they can, how they can do that. And speaking of academic improvement, we have already held our very first round of intentional campus support meetings with the leaders in this room. These are data-driven conversations between district leadership, campus leadership, and to make sure that we're all heading in the same direction, because we do have a strong goal. Our goal is to earn a B this year, and we know that we can make that happen. Our principals are doing a fantastic job of leading their teams and making sure that we are giving the students their best opportunity to succeed. So we have our second round of those campus support meetings this week. They start tomorrow, in fact. And for a little fun this weekend, Ms. Gabriel and I had the pleasure of seeing the Bastrop High School Musical Theater Anastasia. It was a great way to spend a Sunday afternoon. Those are some talented, talented students, not only acting, but the vocal performances. I mean, I thought I, at times, I was just listening to a Broadway production. They were so amazing. So I encourage you to get out and support your fine arts because they're great. Last month, I shared with you the feedback that I'd been receiving from the departments that I had met with, and so I do want to share a little bit about what I'm hearing from the schools and from the teachers and staff. So areas of pride, very similar to what our departments reported. Our teachers feel a strong sense of community and teamwork. They, they like the family atmosphere on their campus to help them do what they do, and they're very supportive of one another. They like how responsive the district departments are to things that, that they need on campus. They are proud of the progress that we've made academically. They're also proud of the successes that we're seeing in academics, athletics, in fine arts, in our CTE programs, and in the Grow Your Own Teacher Pipeline that we have. So all of those things were mentioned. And then I also heard about some challenges that our teachers are facing. Class sizes and staffing continue to be issues, shortages of bilingual and special education staff and support staff in the classroom. Teachers at some schools are reporting larger class sizes, which makes serving the individual needs of every student in their class more difficult. The pacing of the, of the curriculum continues to be something that teachers report is difficult. Combined with the rigor of the, of the curriculum, they feel that some, in some cases, we're leaving some students behind, and so that's something that we want to look at. Several teachers would like, they look forward to the day when maybe we bring back Curriculum Council. Special education was highlighted as a challenge at numerous campuses. Some teachers are experiencing high caseloads of students that they're managing and helping. Others felt that there was not enough inclusion support in our classrooms. So those are also things that we want to look at. Rising student behavior issues were reported at a few campuses among students with our most severe behavior issues or the greatest social-emotional needs. So we actually have a meeting set up on Friday for us to talk about some of those issues. And finally, low pair professional pay, just the, the rise in cost in insurance, even though it, it wasn't a lot this year. Every, every little bit helps when the pay is, is lower for our pair professionals, and I know that that's something that's really important to Ms. Green and to all of us that we continue looking, looking at that. So lots of positive feedback, and I really appreciated the teachers expressing these continued concerns, you know? This is, when we have these conversations meaningfully, then that's when I think we really push the district forward, and we do not only what is in the best interests of kids, but we do what is in the best interests of teachers and our staff. They, they are members of this community, and so that's what, that's, that's our charge. So they like that there's a greater increase in communication and visibility, and so I do want to, I want to show you guys something. In one of my rounds, this was at Bastrop High School, but I was doing some instructional walks with our CTE teachers, and in the welding space, I saw Raina, I'm going to get it right, a CNC plasma cutter. It's this beautiful little machine that wasn't being used because we didn't have everything set up. We got it last year, and we finally got the software this year, and it was all set up. So after I visited, then this was brought back to me, and this was made for me by our CNC plasma cutter. Isn't that so cool? Maybe you guys could get one too. A donation? You want me to donate? But that was exciting to see, and we look forward to improving our technology in the CTE space so that the students have access. Right now, it's, software's on one computer, the teacher's computer, so we, we have to get that fixed so that the students have more direct access, but this was super cool and look forward to being on our campuses these next three days and spending time with these leaders. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Sounds like you've been busy. Next is our curriculum report for bilingual education annual review. Our presenter is Lizbeth Moore, Director of Bilingual Education. Welcome.
Let me see. I'm going to try this. Okay, well, good evening, members of the board. Dr. Lee, thank you so much for your time. My name is Lizbeth, and I am actually new to the Bastrop ISD family. It's about five months for me and my family, and it's been a blessing being here, so I appreciate your time today. So today, I'm just, tonight, I'm just going to share a quick overview of our bilingual education programs and highlight, highlight a few key results from the 2425 school year. I'm a little nervous. I think principals make me scary. Okay, let's do this. So before I get into the data on this slide, let me just share the, the meaning of emergent bilingual student, and basically, another term that we've used in the past is English learner. It's basically a student whose primary language is not English, it's, it's a language other than English. So currently, in our, in our district, we can see the current numbers there, but our emergent bilingual student population is about 45.87% of our whole student population. So that's pretty impressive. We also serve emergent bilingual students that speak 21, 22 other languages. So an example of that is Spanish, of course, being our number one, English as well, and then Vietnamese, Tagalog, Arabic, Chinese, French, and Portuguese, just to name a few. So we are growing in our demographics as well. Here, I believe that Dr. Lee kind of mentioned a little bit on her report, and so I'll connect this to something she's sharing in a second, but basically, we offer three bilingual programs that fall under the bilingual education umbrella, and that is ESL, so English as the second language. We offer dual-language immersion one-way as well, and we offer the bilingual transitional early exit model as well. And with every program that we offer, teacher certifications are a need, they kind of accompany that as well. So here, it's a representation of the bilingual exception and ESL waiver request, and you can see a overall from the last, demographic of the last three years of what we've, we've requested. And currently, we, I am working on the application that's going to be due this November as well. So just to give you a snippet of that. And changing up the topic a little bit, I am And changing up the topic a little bit, I am going to share about, a little bit about Tellpass, and Tellpass is the Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment System. And Tellpass measures, measures the progress of our emergent bilingual students that they make each year in listening, speaking, reading, and writing when it comes to English proficiency. The table titled District Growth, in this table, you can see the percentage of students who have increased a proficiency level on, on their composite score for Tellpass. You can see that students are meeting their composite score growth there, and we are very proud of the growth we're seeing. So this past year, ten campuses met or exceeded their Tellpass growth targets, helping support our district's growth and Domain Three closing the gaps. So Tellpass has been very, their, the results have been very important for us as well. So on, on the reclassification table, when students reach full proficiency in academic English, they reclassify, and that means that they no longer need bilingual or ESL program support. So as we see in this table, each year, more students are hitting this milestone, and that's been very important for us. And that shows us that we're moving in the right direction. Okay, now that you've seen how our emergent bilingual students are making progress in their language proficiency and reclassification, I'm just going to highlight a few of their, a few academic increases that we've seen. So first, I've shared that ten campuses met or exceeded their targets for Tellpass growth. We've also seen that we've had a math growth that now mirrors the district's average, so that's been very important for us as well. And science and social studies academic achievement increase, and we saw an increase in approaches, meets, and masters levels for, for those categories. So that was very good for us as well. Two areas where we are going to continue to focus on are reading, language arts, academic achievement and growth, and math academic achievement. And then just looking ahead, and the current work that we're doing as a department, our current goal is focused on Domain Three closing the gaps, and we're going to do everything we can to continue to support the campuses so that we can all meet their, their targeted goal, and then see an overarching increase in Domain Three closing the gaps from seventy-three to eighty. And what this means to, for us, is we're going to continue to strengthen our compliance systems to ensure that all programs run smoothly. We also want to continue to grow our bilingual education programs while we expand opportunities in dual language, and what that's going to do for us is we're going to ensure that we're providing more supports in the student's primary language. And with that point as well, we're going to continue to partner with HR to recruit and retain properly certified teachers. And a key part of this work is we've started Tellpass talks where the specialists in the department are going to be visiting the campuses where there's a high need for this topic, and they're just going to be speaking strategies with the teachers and the, the campus staff. But the campus is already too, the principals have been leading this work as well, and it's, it's going really well. And then the last thing I'll touch base on is we're going to continue to collaborate across departments. I do want to highlight the CNI team and my peers and my department as well. It takes a village, and we're going to continue to align our practices so that we can all together collectively meet our, our goals for our emergent bilingual students. And thank you. That's all I have for you today. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I had a really terrific interaction with a sweet, sweet girl, and I suspect she spoke Vietnamese. This was the first day of school, and I was on the Colony Oaks campus. So on the Tellpass test, if you could educate me just again, I'm just probably forgotten this, but so that testing would happen until she attains proficiency at a specific level, and in which case she stops taking Tellpass testing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I needed. Thank you.
Anything else?
Are there any other questions from the board?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Our financial report, human resources, human resources report, police department report, and facilities and support services report are for information only. Next would be our consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull any of the consent agenda items for discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Right of second. It's been moved and second. If all the board members, we have a new way of voting now. We have to raise our hand. And if all in favor, please raise your hand. Let the record reflect the motion carried unanimously.
It doesn't matter which hand.
She raised two hands.
We have to look at only.
Oh, yeah.
Moving on to our action items, the next one is consider approval of the 2025-2026 district improvement and campus improvement plans. Our presenter is Kendra Monk, our Director of Leadership Development and School Improvement, and the one that provided this with over three hundred pages to study intensely.
Yes, I will say that it's down from like four hundred, so. Well, good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to bring to you our campus and district improvement plans this evening. The principals that you saw here and our district improvement committee work year-round on a needs assessment to determine what goals they need to set, what strategies they need to put in place to improve their campuses. So under Texas Education Code, all districts must have an improvement plan that is developed, evaluated, and monitored by a planning and decision-making committee. So we have one of those at the district level, and then each campus has their own committee. And our purpose of having an improvement plan is just what it says, to improve performance for all student groups, to close achievement gaps, and to support systemic change. So tonight, we're bringing the 2526 District and Campus Improvement Plan Performance Objectives for Board Approval. Both our district and campus improvement plans begin with the end in mind, a focus on continued student growth and success by the end of the school year. So as you'll see in the multitudes of plans before you, every campus wrote a personalized goal for each measure of the accountability system, with a clear intent to raise the campus by at least one letter grade. On this slide here, you'll see several of our district goals. So for academic achievement or passing tests, as a district, we're seeking to increase the percentage of students at meets grade level, and we have specific goals for certain content areas. Next up, you can see our academic growth goal, and we're looking to increase that within the accountability rating system from a sixty-one to a seventy-four. And then finally, closing the gaps, which is making sure that all student needs are met, we're looking to increase that domain from seventy-three to eighty. And this combination of goals is strategically written to raise our district from a C to a B. So on the next few slides, you'll see some pieces aligned to our overarching goals. Our performance objectives that you see here can be considered as mini-goals. Each one has a district-level monitor, and so we've just selected a few sample strategies to highlight this evening. So what you see here in these performance objectives, these are aligned to all of our, these are all aligned to our student achievement goal. The first two performance objectives are monitored by our Directors of Elementary and Secondary Education, and they call out our assessment processes that lead up to star testing. One strategy to note is the commitment to provide timely support to campuses with our prioritization to highest-need campuses. And then you'll also notice our CCMR strategy monitored by our Director of College Career and Military Readiness that opens up multiple and varied opportunities for students to pursue post-secondary pathways. Next up, our student growth goal contains several performance objectives or subgoals designed to serve as stepping stones. Our Director of Accountability and Compliance is providing a continuous cycle of training for staff to analyze data so they can design instruction around each student, meeting their personalized growth goals. Our Digital Learning Director is working directly with campus teacher leaders to design personalized blended learning strategies. Our Director of Special Programs has his team focused on differentiation strategies utilized in classrooms while collaborating with campus leaders during observational walks. In addition, our district continues to make safety a priority by collaborating with all district and certain community personnel in training around our standard response protocol. Finally, we come to our performance objectives aligned to the success of all of our students, known as closing the gaps. Within bilingual education, our director is, like you just saw, is focusing on Tellpass, including student, teacher, and parent understanding of how the assessment affects students in their, as they learn English. And BISD, I'm sure you would agree, already has an amazing fine arts program, but our Director of Fine Arts wants to further increase sustained student enrollment and participation. How many more kids can we get on the stage? Our Human Resources Director is working with her team on supporting campuses and reducing teacher turnover by upgrading evidence-based teacher and staff retention strategies. Also, we're continuing to work diligently on student attendance, and our goal here, increasing our rate to ninety-four percent, is overseen by our Student Services Director. So overall, these performance objectives and strategies for both the district and the campuses have been set with intentionality. We are all focused on student outcomes that will serve to prepare every student for graduation, to take on life's challenges, and to be ready for tomorrow's opportunities. Any questions?
Are there any questions from the board on the improvement plans? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I was just going to say, my favorite word is intentional, and, and I appreciate that, and I want to say that I appreciate each one of you and all of the hard work that went into this, to, to design these plans. It was a great job. Thank you, and I look forward to amazing results. Thanks.
I move to approve the 2025-2026 District and Campus Improvement Plans Performance Objective as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the plans as presented. All in favor, please raise your hand. Let the record reflect the motion carried unanimously.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, mister. And thank you for all the principals for putting in all this hard work to get, to get us this far. Next, we'll consider approval of recommendations from the School Library Advisory Council. Our presenter is Chris Lershey, our Director of Digital Learning and Library Services.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Lee. I'm here tonight to provide you with a brief update on this new council, our School Library Advisory Council, or SLAC. You can see our picture there. I've got us on the cover of a book, which I think is fun. So first, I do want to express my gratitude to the, these dedicated community members, parents, and staff who volunteer their time to serve on this council. We have a very collaborative and dedicated group, and we're very appreciative of their time that they're committing to this process. So just to get a little bit about the process, so as you may know, Bastrop ISD has a very solid board-approved policy, along with processes and procedures that guide how we develop our library collections. And so the purpose of this council isn't to reinvent that wheel, so to speak. Rather, it's providing an essential layer of community partnership transparency, bringing them into the fold on this process, and kind of educating them on, on how we do things. And so we've kind of labeled this as checking our work, so to speak. Our certified librarians put in countless hours developing and planning our school library collections, and so this has been a great partnership to kind of bring them into the fold to see how that works. And so we held an initial orientation session with them to give them an overview of what our BISD collection development processes look like, kind of fielded their questions, got them acclimated to our systems. And then we also wanted to establish a collaborative rapport with the council, and so we shared some book recommendations amongst each other, and kind of just shared our connection to Bastrop ISD, whether that be through work, children, involvement in the community, or in many cases, all three. And so then came time to hold our first regular meeting. It was a very productive session. With a new council, you have to initiate a lot of things, so the first thing that they voted on was to adopt the bylaws of that council, and then following those bylaws, nominated and elected their officers for leadership. So Ms. Bridget Farum Rosenhour was elected the parent co-chair, and Ms. Kaitlin Wilkerson was elected Secretary of the SLAC. And so we also followed a very similar model to our BISD School Health Advisory Council, or SHAC, and so we kind of used their bylaws as a model for ours. And so following that model, there's a parent and a district co-chair, because this, these council works directly with a district office, and so in that model, I'll serve as the district co-chair in a non-voting capacity. And then finally, most importantly, we approved the list of library materials that our librarians had put together to be procured after they had opportunity to review that. That list was posted publicly thirty days prior to today's meeting. And so kind of have down there the full timeline, just so folks are aware, kind of what all goes into this, but even prior to where this timeline starts, our campus-level librarians are developing their lists, and then they share those centrally with us so we can compile them into a single list to post those for review. Then after giving some time for the SLAC to review that, they had their meeting, and then we shared the list with you prior to this meeting, as well as posting the meeting recording and things like that on the website. And so tonight, we're bringing this list to you for your approval, and so the next time that they'll be meeting, this process has already started, the next cycle for the November meeting, and so they'll be meeting November third to kind of continue the next part of the process. So I want to, again, thank all of those council members for their commitment to this, for our students in our schools, as well as you all, the Board of Trustees, and Dr. Lee, for your continued support of our important work. So if you have any questions, please let me know at this time. Yes, ma'am.
I have one quick one. So what is the term limit for these folks? Do they roll off after a year, or?
No, so I believe, I think I have the bylaws with me, but I think it's a two-year appointment with the, the opportunity to serve in consecutive terms. After that, you'd have to, to step away for at least a term.
Thank you.
I think they also have to also continue to be a parent in the district.
Correct, correct. So that is a stipulation that they're.
If their child, you know, graduated, they would. The board always has to approve who is on the council.
Yes, and we have all the different, you know, parts and pieces for how that works, and if you serve a partial term, and, you know, how that counts, it's in the bylaws. Yes.
All right. Yep.
Ms. Ruiz, would you like to make the motion, please?
Yes, I would. I move to approve the School Library Advisory Council recommended procurement list as presented.
A second.
It's been motioned and seconded that we approve the list as presented. All in favor, please raise your hand. Let the record reflect, it's passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Next is consider approval of nomination resolution for the Board of Directors of the Bastrop Central Appraisal District. Presenter is myself. The Board of Directors for the Bastrop Central Appraisal District is composed of members elected by the taxing units within Bastrop County, including the county, school districts, cities, and Austin Community College. As part of the appointment process, the BISD board must submit its nominations by written resolution to the chief appraiser by mid-October. The appraisal district will then prepare the official ballot before October thirtieth. This is an appointment year for Bastrop, and the appraisal district cannot move forward with creating the ballot until all participating taxing units have submitted their nominations. The Bastrop Central Appraisal District has officially opened its 2025 appointment cycle for two positions on the Board of Directors. The upcoming terms will run from January one to twenty-twenty, of twenty-twenty-six through December twenty-thirty-one of twenty-twenty-nine. The current terms of David Redd and Justin Besner will conclude at the end of this year, and both have expressed interest in continuing to serve. Is there any discussion concerning the appointment or nomination for the Board Directors for the Appraisal District from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the resolution nominating David Redd and Justin Besner on the Board of Directors for the Bastrop Central Appraisal District as presented. Do I need to make that approval separate, or both can be?
I think we're just nominating to put them on the ballot.
Right.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, will you please raise your hand? Any opposed? Let the record reflect, the motion carried unanimously. Next is our information items, which includes the Board of Trustees' calendar of events, enrollment, single-budgeted purchases more than $50,000, and revisions to policy DEE Local-A, which are information-only. At this time, we'll move into closed session. The time is now 6:38, and the board will now convene in a closed session to discuss the following items as allowed by the Texas Government Codes. Chapter 551.072, the real property; 551.071, for attorney consultation; and 551.074, for personnel matters. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open meeting. We'll now move into closed session. The time is now 6:58, and the board will now reconvene in open session. I don't believe there's any motion. Does any member have anything to bring before the good of the district before adjourned? If not, we are adjourned.